And everybody, I'd like to call to order the February 4th, 2016 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. Thank you all for coming. I'd like everyone to silence electronic devices at this time. If you've got a laptop open or a cellphone, please just make sure it's on silent for us. Thank you. Heather, will you please call the roll?
Tom Gristed.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Jeff Brown's excused.
Thank you. So Jeff Brown's excused and we have no minutes to approve, so tonight we're going to move right into our public comment period. Tonight's meeting is on the Housing Chapter, the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, so we're going to be having a work session in a couple of minutes on that topic. This public comment period is an opportunity for anyone here to talk about anything else that they'd like to talk about to us for a few minutes. So if you want to say something that's not about the work session, now's your chance. You can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and let us know what you think. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period. So we're going to move right into our Housing Chapter work session. We had a work session last, two weeks ago, on the Land Use Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, and at that time, we asked staff to flip the order of things and bring us the Housing Chapter at this work session because we all felt like they were fairly integrated, and we wanted to see those two and then have another work session to kind of consolidate our thoughts on both those chapters at the same time. So tonight is about discussing the Housing Chapter. We're not going to be making any conclusions or recommendations or anything like that. And with that, turn it over to Lisa.
Alrighty. Good evening. Lisa Poole with the Planning Department. As you stated, tonight, we're going to be discussing the Housing Chapter, so I just want to give you a brief outline of the presentation. I'll be going over the state requirements for the housing element, a little bit of background information, and then launch into the key changes and the schedule for the rest of the chapters for you. So the state requirements for housing, according to the Growth Management Act, the purpose of the Housing Chapter is to ensure vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods is maintained, encourage availability of affordable housing to all economic segments of the population, promote a variety of residential densities and housing types, and encourage preservation of existing housing stock. Also, these four requirements are also to be integrated specifically into the plan, an inventory of existing housing, and an analysis of housing necessary to provide for the 20-year projected growth forecast, goals and policies related to the preservation, improvement, and development of housing, identification of sufficient land for housing, and this includes government-assisted housing, housing for low-income families, manufactured housing, multifamily housing, group homes, and foster care facilities. And then lastly, provisions for existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. Just to provide a little bit of context for the existing policy foundation, and then some of our new policies, reminding you once again that this is an update and we're relying on our existing policy foundation heavily. So homeownership rates have been falling across the country for the past eight years, and this reflects a fundamental change in the economy since the recession. Many can no longer afford to purchase homes. And Bellingham in particular is a unique housing market within Waukesha County, primarily because of its students and retirees. Seventy percent of Bellingham households have just one to two people. Millennials, as you know, are living at home longer, they're getting married later in life and having fewer children, and they prefer in-city living with transportation options. Also, Bellingham is diversifying. From 2000 to 2014, the non-white population increased from 12% to 15%. Low-income families are more likely than families with higher incomes to face housing instability. They were hit hardest during the Great Recession and have recovered the slowest or not at all. So with all of these things in mind, this points to the need for an increasingly diverse housing supply with affordable alternatives to what you would consider typical large-lot single-family homes, and those are reflected in our existing policy foundation as well as our new policies. So once again, looking at the key changes by our five focus areas, which are housing, urban villages, innovation, sustainability, and health. We'll start with the changes that are specific to affordable housing and housing choices, which is germane to this chapter, of course. So regarding low-income housing programs and public funding, this isn't a new policy, but we're just stating in the plan that we want to continue to support these programs and possibly increase these programs and public funding. And related to this is the suite of affordable housing incentives that the city offers, such as density bonuses and reductions in fees and charges, specifically impact fees and system development charges. And we also have been looking at our development review process and how we can improve that through our LEAN program that I'm sure many of you are aware of. Unsheltered and homeless housing, surprisingly, we didn't have any policies specifically related to this in our existing plan. We talked about it a lot, we don't have policies. So we did include some policies related to reducing and preventing homelessness by working with our partners and providing needed services. Also workforce housing, which is housing for middle-income workers, we do include policies related to supporting the development of more workforce housing through incentives and working with our local organizations and partners. Oops, sorry. Student housing, this is an issue that we touched on also in the Land Use Chapter. We are looking at working with our local institutions of higher learning to address issues associated with off-campus housing, off-campus student housing. And then senior housing, we've got policies supporting ways for older people to remain in their homes and communities as their housing needs change and provide other housing options for them. And last but not least, smaller housing, we're looking at continuing implementation of the Infill Toolkit, which is a program that came about since the 2000 Plan, and also reviewing our accessory dwelling unit ordinance to consider whether or not they should be allowed in other zones. Next, our urban villages. The Land Use Chapter really touches on those more than the Housing Chapter, but the Housing Chapter does continue to support the implementation of urban village plans and focusing our high-density and mixed-use development primarily in these areas, as well as our high-capacity transit corridors that connect the villages. Health, we describe the many links between housing and health. Conditions of homes and neighborhoods have profound effects on the health of its residents, and this includes everything from healthy food and safe recreational areas to places for people to socialize. Also, we talk about stable, quality, affordable housing throughout the community, especially in areas with access to good transit, employment, and services. Transportation is the second-largest expense for families behind housing, which is first, and it's important to factor this in when looking at housing costs. When transportation and housing costs are combined, compact, walkable, mixed-use areas fare well because there's more opportunity for traveling by means other than a car. For our sustainability focus areas, once again, the legacies and strategic commitments have been folded into the plan. We also have several historic preservation goals and policies, and policies aimed at maintaining and improving existing neighborhoods and homes. There are many environmental, social, and economic benefits of preserving and rehabilitating existing buildings. And once again, to tie back to a theme that we're including throughout the chapters is resiliency to adverse events, so just encouraging housing retrofits to make them more resilient to natural disasters and climate change. And then our last focus area is innovation, and so I think last fall, it was Tara Sundine, our Economic Development Manager, came to the Planning Commission and updated you on the city's process to review existing incentives and offer new incentives. And the council recently adopted an ordinance that puts into place impact fee and system development charge waivers of up to 80% for projects in the consolidated plan and others that are approved by council. So we feel like that's an innovative incentives program, and also tying in some of the other items that I referenced, the Infill Housing Toolkit, our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and some of our workforce housing policies, we also consider those to be innovative. Just want to touch on the review schedule coming up. So next time, as you stated, we'll be talking about the Land Use and Housing Chapters again, and then in March, the Transportation and Capital Facilities Chapters, also the Environment and Economic Development Chapters, and then the last meeting in March will wrap up with the other items in the plan, and then in April, we'll wrap it all up. So with that, once again, we'll be happy to talk with you about these, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think we should take the same approach as last week and let public speak first, if everyone's okay with that. And that way, we get to hear their comments before we kind of start our discussion. Okay. So with that, we're going to give the public an opportunity to comment during the work session, and so we're going to do that first so we can hear your comments, and then take those into consideration as we have our discussion. So same as last public comment period, everybody has three minutes to speak. You can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and then tell us what you think. I have a list, and if you did not sign up, you can still speak. Just come on down when everyone on the list is finished, and you can line up against the wall. And Mary Kay is the first person on the list, followed by Ann and Linda.
My name is Mary Kay Robinson, currently the President of the Waukesha County Association of Realtors, and I live in Bellingham. The GMA requires that we provide for existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the community, which means housing affordability and choices. There's a misconception, though, I feel, that affordability equals subsidized. It does not. Affordable simply means that I can comfortably pay for my home with my income, that's all. The second page of the memorandum discusses the housing for the homeless, low-income seniors, et cetera, but makes little mention of hard-working and middle-class families and their housing struggles. We absolutely should take care of the homeless and the low-income populations, but Bellingham has over 80,000 residents. Aside from the upper-income folks who can take care of themselves, what about the hard-working families who want to buy a home in Bellingham? Some stats from the MLS. In 2011, the median price of a home in Bellingham was over $269,000. In 2015, it rose to $325,000. That's a 21% increase in four years. Wages just can't keep up at that pace of appreciation, and that forces more families to go elsewhere for a home and a yard. The city's been growing, but our housing stock has lagged behind. It's simple supply and demand. I currently have a young couple, millennials. He works in Bellingham, she's pregnant, about to give birth to their first child. They can afford $210,000. They can't get a house in Bellingham for that, so they're looking at Cedro Woolley and Blaine. The assumption that the millennials demand urban living is not true. When they get married, they start families, they want a house and a yard, not a high-rise. The hipsters in urban settings is a myth. Jed Kolko, chief economist for Trulia, stated that in 2012 to 2013, quote, "The millennial population growth in big dense cities was outpaced by growth in big-city suburbs, lower-density cities, and even lower-density suburbs and small cities." Another issue is the lack of any mention of the land supply in Attachment B. Land supply at the end of 2015 was half of what it was in 2010, according to the MLS. Again, the laws of supply and demand are pushing up prices in Bellingham, so much so that Ferndale exceeded Bellingham last year in single-family construction permits. In the recent Dewey Valley annexation of two DNR parcels, the city vastly overstated the number of housing units, up to 387, using a mathematical formula for land capacity. Upon my testimony and other previously submitted testimonies citing steep slopes, wetlands, critical areas, et cetera, the city reconsidered and dropped its proposed units by over half. This land capacity analysis was so far off that it calls into question the city's assumption of sufficient land supply to accommodate population growth.
About 30 seconds.
The mix of housing choices must include affordable, single-family homes. That's what people want. That's what they'll drive to get. That means asking hard questions again and again, and asking for an increase of the UGA to include the South Kitek and New Street areas. The numbers just don't lie. Facts are the facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann Mackey, and I live at 1351 Humboldt, New York neighborhood, and unfortunately, I think the train left the station some time ago in terms of affordable, single-family homes in our inner neighborhoods, in the fact that many of them have been concentrated as rental properties for several years and have been openly in violation of the zoning laws around single-family housing. They've been turned into illegal rooming houses, and so the rents have been raised, and these homes are no longer affordable for families to rent. And I live in a neighborhood where at least 50% are these kind of rental homes, and a large number of them have been for years and are still owned by members of the real estate industry. So, you know, I think we need to look pretty honestly at where the problem evolved from for unaffordable, single-family housing in our older neighborhoods in the city. I wasn't going to address that point tonight. I wanted to talk about the housing choice elements of the proposed Housing Chapter, specifically Policy H7 on Page 4, where it says we should consider allowing detached accessory dwelling units in certain neighborhoods. And it further states, in the side-margin bubble, current rules require property owners to live in one of the units. Now, that current rule came from the Washington State 1993 Housing Act that was then implemented in the City of Bellingham in 1995 with our own city accessory dwelling unit regulations. And I want to really encourage the commission and the city council ultimately that we must retain that rule, that they need to be owner-occupied accessory dwelling units. I participated this last year in a accessory dwelling unit task force that was initiated by our planning director, and the consensus at the end of our work last year was that we first must get a legitimate inventory of the existing accessory dwelling units in the city. That inventory is so important, and I was glad to see Lisa mention that in her presentation, that that's one of the things that the state calls for, is a correct, true inventory of our housing and our housing types, and I want to see an inventory of our accessory dwelling units in the city.
About 30 seconds in.
Thanks. On affordability, that's what's great about accessory dwelling units. It makes the home more affordable for the owner, for the property owner, but I don't want to see these garage apartments turned into just more income for an absentee landlord. If you have the owner occupying the property, they are there for oversight and maintenance, they can deal with providing off-street parking for their accessory dwelling unit, and it's, you know, they're giving up something by having that form of housing on their property, but they're also looking closely at not damaging the integrity of the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. After Linda, we've got Tim Hostetler, and then that's everyone on the list. So if anyone else would like to speak after Tim speaks, just come on down against the wall. Thank you.
Hi. Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. I sent you a letter. You've probably heard all this before, but we'll go over it one more time quick. We think there's a lot of good stuff in this chapter about increasing variety, size of homes, lots, whatever, because basically there is no silver bullet to resolve our affordability problem, and by that I mean houses that are affordable. I don't mean just subsidized housing. I would appreciate it if we addressed in this chapter, if we named as one of the major causes, lack of buildable land that residents can afford. I realize city council in their, the city council we had in December, in their vote in December, didn't buy that, but if you guys consider it important, I would, for defensibility of the chapter, if nothing else, I would suggest, please, we make sure that is flat-out stated. I also mentioned land capacity analysis. We have some questions about whether that's entirely accurate or parts of it need to be reconsidered. Many notes in my letter on that. The annexation Mary Kay referred to is the first real example, the first example out of the box was an annexation near Dewey Valley that when we were asked to double-check the assumption of population the area might support drop by half. So there we go. Inclusionary zoning is mentioned in this chapter and in the Land Use Chapter. I thought the Planning Commission made a decision last spring that you were not in favor of that. I was surprised to see it crop up again. Once again, inclusionary zoning, while it may sound great, produces a small number of homes that are supposed to be priced to be affordable for low-income people. The expense is a large number of homes that are no longer as affordable for middle-income people, who are now in this plan identified as a group you're also trying to help. I would strongly suggest, urge you to consider some sort of wording like that we proposed in our letter, saying something to the effect of, "Programs supporting low-income housing affordability will not be encouraged by the city if they raise prices for other income groups that have been identified as needing housing affordability help." The problem with subsidized programs is often there are unintended consequences, and we're asking you to please help us make sure we're on the watch for that type of thing, because it makes no sense to me to have inclusionary zoning that calls for 30 low-income homes when you have in exchange 170 that middle-income homes that are priced higher. Ann, did you say 30 seconds? That's my time. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Hostetler. I live at 201 North 34th Street, Seehome neighborhood. I'm the Vice President of the Seehome Neighborhood Association Board. I'm speaking for them, and I'll be very brief because Ann touched on the main issue that the Seehome residents are really concerned about, and that is the ADU. There is a program now. It's not, has nothing behind it. The onsite information source from planning says there are two ADUs in Seehome. We walk everything, and there's at least 25. So you have to have an inventory before you can even begin the discussion on what should be done, because as I'm sure any representative from any neighborhood would say, "Well, we would accept ADUs, but there has to be some standards," and the developing interests need that, too. They need to have some specifics on, from landscaping to parking, and everything associated with it. That's my main point. Finally, I would like to say that the urban village concept is very good. I am just speaking for the board again, somewhat elated at what the Bellingham Housing Authority is doing with the Aloha site. It's very early in the process. I'm sure we'll have many comments, but it is a step in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Do I just put something on there? This one? Oh, yeah. Thank you. My name's Clayton Petrie. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood, and as you can tell, I'm a little under the weather. I wanted to talk to you about something that came to you at the beginning of this process. This is a city, from the city presentation, and I know you vetted this issue pretty well, and what we ended up with was the suggestion of reserves, and I noticed that reserves aren't mentioned one time in this Housing Chapter. I really think you should have some language and some policies in there that talk about how necessary they are to address this issue. So at your next work session, it'd be, you know, great. So the next thing is, we know we have a problem, and I think we know what the problem is, and it's what we're providing. I noticed that the chart was a little funky, so I made a new chart with properly-sized bars, and so you can better see how different the supply is. That's the middle two bars. It's definitely the problem. I think that you guys realized that and recommended those two single-family UGA areas, and, you know, hopefully, we can get those online to address this issue. It's a big deal. The next thing is, in the Housing Chapter, it talks about vacancy rates, which are very low. The state says that, you know, we're under 2%, and the land capacity assumes that we're at 4% on one kind of housing and 7 and 1/4 on the other. Where are you going to get those houses to bring that vacancy rate up? It still hasn't been addressed. That's a lot of units. I think it's thousands. And in order to get to a healthy vacancy rate, you have to, you're going to have to build more than just what you've accounted for. I think that's a huge problem that should be addressed in the Housing Chapter. It should say, you know, we're short these kind of houses, this many, because our vacancy rate is down here, and here's how, where we're going to get that land, this is where we're going to build it, this is how we're going to do it, and it's just not addressed at all. So before I lose my voice, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and I hope that's helpful.
Thanks, Clayton.
Somebody's keys up here. Is that yours, Clayton?
Lights, please.
I just want to back up what Mary Ann and Linda and Clayton have already said. Affordability appears about two or three times on Page 1 of this 17-page readout on housing. One of the sentences there says that the city is committed to providing adequate land supply to accommodate growth, so we want to keep that one in mind. Also says that one of the goals there is to provide infrastructure and public service. I don't know if they've been providing too much infrastructure in recent years. Then that we should continue to monitor the income-housing affordability gap, and one of the strategies was to use infill and urban villages, but infill, I mean, I don't think that's working out too well. I don't know how many infill projects have been successful, but I don't think too many. And urban villages, the problem is, it's good on paper, but not many people want to live there. I know there's some urban villages that are being created, and some of them are public-supported, public money, but not private money so much. And we want to refer to Goal H1, which says that we should be ensuring sufficient quantity and variety of housing, that's already been mentioned, and Goal H2, that we should foster affordable housing. Affordable housing appears over and over again in that chapter. And H3, continue implementation of infills, and we know, we've talked about that. And on the Page 4, it says, perhaps, "The most pressing and complex challenge facing the cities is how to support and encourage and provide appropriate housing opportunities for all segments of the population." So that's a big one. We know, being in the real estate business, that most people want a single-family house. You've heard this before. The city has 78% multifamily and 22% single-family. That's just absolute, absolute opposite, 180 degrees off. People will travel to as far as they have to until they can afford to buy the single-family house, whether that be Ferndale, Linden, and even Mount Vernon. So it's so clear, it seems to us in the business, it seems so clear, and where the problem is, why don't you just expand the land supply? The land supply is limited. Limited land supply means higher cost for lots. Higher cost for lots means higher-priced housing. Higher-priced housing means less people can afford it, and there's four references to afford it.
And with that, I think we'll move into discussion and questions for staff and general discussion. So, is there anybody who'd like to kick it off? Steve? Yeah, go for it. Thank you.
Yeah, my first question comes from Ms. Twitchell's comments. Inclusionary zoning. Where she says in her first paragraph, "Is our understanding that the planning commission decided last spring against proposing inclusionary zoning in the comp plan? Yet it appears again." I would like to ask why.
The policy that's in the chapter is a carryover from the existing plan. So, that's, that policy is in our 2006 comp plan. It's one of the tools that could be considered in the future to address housing affordability. So, having a policy in there that suggests that that's one of many tools that could be used in the future is appropriate, we think.
So, even though the planning commission said they did not like it, the thought is, since it's a general policy goal to include it at some point in time, that it would be an acceptable method to use?
Could be. Could be, yes.
But it seems like that's the case of a lot of things. I see this as a utopian document, trying to include anything and everything. And I guess I'm trying to see that that's the whole goal for this, just to include anything and everything. I see land capacity is a huge problem in Bellingham. It states it. We've had so many people stand up before us and say, that's where we are today. But yet again, we don't seem to be approaching that point where land capacity is now a goal. If you understand. We've got two big growth areas that have been designated reserve that we've had testimony that'll take eight to 10 years if we ever put them in the UGA to even start considering growth in those areas. So, everybody says land capacity is a problem, but yet we don't, we're not pursuing additional land to try to solve this housing problem. I just, everything seems to be counterdicted someplace, whether it be expert testimony or in these documents. And I don't know which way, you know, what are we supposed to do? Just say, throw as many darts at the wall as we can, and perhaps over the next 20 years, maybe one or two will stick? Or are we supposed to narrow and try to identify what, where we should be going? I'm really confused on that.
Well, I guess I would only say, Steve, that the question of land capacity and the growth forecast and the UGA boundaries came before this body. And it came before the city council, and they made their recommendation. And now, it's at the county council for a final decision. So, that's a process that's ongoing. We don't know what the outcome is going to be, but we know that you guys spent a lot of time talking about it, as did the city council, and they made their recommendation not to expand the boundaries at this time. So, I hope we don't need to spend a lot of time on that because that's been before you and it's now with the final decision makers. In terms of, you know, what should be in the chapter, you know, to provide direction, what we try to do is identify a number of strategies and policies and tools that we might use in the future to address some of these issues. We try to provide support for innovative strategies and so forth. If you want to, if the commission wants to be more specific or to put some more specific policy direction in there, you're obviously free to recommend that. And we'll help you with that if that's the direction you want to go.
Thank you.
Phil?
Sort of taking off on what Steve was saying, I spent a lot of time going over this, pondering some of the words. And of course, the goal is a statement of a desired end result. And then, under the policy, I looked at key words like ensure, foster, promote, support, encourage, and establish. Those are very vague words. I mean, in my opinion. If you don't get an operational definition as to what that means. And so, future people reading this, if we're looking at some time out with the policy we're coming up with, could interpret those words and those policies then just about anything from very strict to, if you're especially insuring something, which usually means guarantee, to giving it a side glance while they're applying some other things. And I'm just a little concerned about some of the vagueness of the first word usually in the sentence when listing the policy and interpretations and unintended consequences as to what can happen with these. And usually it has, if, and I see any place you have the policy change is to shift an outcome. And we already, we have a natural trend of outcome, which is supply and demand on real estate. And what we want to do is change things so that they're affordable and people can, you know, stay in place and so on. And all of these then have policies that tend to direct or sway an outcome away from what they would be if you did a hands-off. And I'm a little concerned about where, and I know I'm probably getting into the weeds here, but I'm just concerned about where that leads us. I'd like to have something a little bit more so that you know that the person reading this in three or four years is going to have a visual of what it is we're thinking now and that if it needs to be changed or adjusted, they can do that. Because there's a lot of assumptions that are being made here that I think are not, are either, could be erroneous, I'm not saying they are, could be erroneous, or at least misinterpreted. And I just have concerns about, I don't want to go around and around, but about that kind of thing. Somebody getting their hands on this could just decide that, yes, we've guaranteed, you know, supported low-income housing at any cost. And I just want to make sure we, there's some balance and reason. We need, I mean, I think this whole thing needs to have a balance and reason applied to it. And I'll just be, thank you.
Garrett?
Yeah, I guess my question's a little bit about processes. My understanding, we agreed last meeting to push any recommendations on the land use chapter until we had an opportunity to evaluate the housing chapter. And there's a lot, there's a lot of overlapping goals and policies between these two chapters. My question is, is on the 18th, I would imagine we're going to be making some substantive recommendations and changes. At our last meeting, we had talked about a policy in the land use chapter and had asked staff to maybe propose some rewritten language on policy LU23. Did you guys do that?
We're working on it right now. I mean, I think the thought is, and Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but you wouldn't really make your recommendation on changes to the chapters until the end. Until you've seen all the chapters and we've had all these discussions. And so, what we're doing right now, what staff's doing, is we're making a list of all the changes that we've heard from you, including the ones from the last meeting. And then, we'll bring that to you as we go through. And we'll say, okay, so we heard that you want to make this change. Do you agree?
All the way at the end, the comprehensive look at the?
Right. Once you've seen all the chapters, because they all go together, and you really need to see them all before you can make, I think, your final recommendations to council, if that makes sense.
That's good.
I think that's appropriate.
Because that, you know, it's a long process. If somebody's not able to attend, you know, one meeting, that they're not missing out on what would be, you know, a recommendation. Because that's my concern, is that we go through this, we have a lot of discussions. I think if, you know, we come to an agreement on changes that we get behind, that we want to see that language adopted, or at least recommended to be adopted and not just get lost in the discussion. So, because I think at the end of this meeting, we may have something on these two chapters that's, you know, substantive.
Yeah. I think, don't, don't, I don't think anyone here should feel obligated to make any recommendations that we have to, you know, second or forward on formally. If, for two months from now, and we're talking about parks and open space chapter, and you think back to something that ties in, I think at any point, we should all feel comfortable giving staff feedback like you're talking about on LU23. We want you to think about this policy or goal or something, and then that'll all come back. And we won't, you know, we won't actually kind of fully vet them until the end. I think that's the right way to do it.
Are we going to have an opportunity to see those prior to, you know, the final work sessions? I mean, how, you know, is this going to be kept in a form of, sort of like a comment tracker would be? How do you guys intend on doing that? I mean, should that be emailed out and disclosed to the public on where we're at, or?
Yeah. What we've done with other processes that take a long time is we just keep a running list of all of the changes that you've asked us to make or to think about or to come back to you with, with revised language. We keep that in a separate document, and then at the end, we go through it. And we say, Garrett, you suggested to change LU23. Here's what we're proposing. Does the commission agree?
Okay. Well, that should work.
Rather than start, you know, scratching out text and putting in new stuff, we keep it on a separate list so everyone can see both what was originally proposed and the changes that the planning commission is discussing. And that all goes on the website for people to review.
Yeah, that's the right approach. Because we might find the answer down the road, you know, before we get to the end.
Yeah, okay.
In a different chapter. Tom, do you?
So, you're making a list. Are you going to check it twice? Before we get into really talking here, again, I want to compliment Lisa and staff on the rewriting. And I want to tell the public that the existing comprehensive plan is a chore to read. And it's compared, compared to this, it's like reading Old English. I really, I really appreciate making the chapters much more comprehensible and brief. Thank you. What I'm hearing from the public and what I've seen for a number of years, a great number of years, is that the cost of housing, particularly in this town, is exceeding the affordability, and the gap is widening, not narrowing. And this is due to three factors that I can see, that, three major factors. One is the cost of land. Two is the cost of construction materials and builder's profit. And the third is the relatively stagnant pay scale that we accept to live in probably God's green acre. And I don't know that there is a real fast, easy way to fix this. Planning Commission, in its great wisdom, suggested to the city council that we expand UGA areas. The city council decided that they were going to not do that. In past years, the commission and staff supported the infill toolkit for use in single-family zones. City council, in its wisdom, decided not to do that. So, we have to face the facts that there are political obstacles to what we want to do as well. I'm encouraged to see that one of the, one of the policies is to continue permitting and allowing manufactured housing, which basically, if we said we weren't going to do it, we'd have the feds jumping on our neck because it's a federal law that you can't zone out. And as far as this, all this, come on, instead, the inclusionary zoning. Last year, in a trade publication, I read that a tall building, one of those that actually touches the sky in New York, as a deal for getting the zoning to go that high, they had to include, they had to provide inclusionary zoning, or, you know, allow affordable, unquote, housing. And this building had, you know, shops and stuff on the first few floors, and then, I'm working on an old man's memory, a certain number of floors for a hotel, and then a certain number of floors for affordable. And then, higher you got, the less affordable it got. And this developer tried to make a separate entrance for those affordable people so that they wouldn't mix with the hotel guests or the ones who lived in the high stories. And somebody took them to court, I believe, and surprisingly, the developer lost. It was against the spirit of the inclusionary zoning. But anyway, it's going to be a battle to, a battle, it's going to be a difficult problem to solve to get affordable housing in this town, even if we magically incorporate a whole bunch of land. But I think, you know, there are other people up here that are a lot smarter than me. I'll just write on their coattails and we'll figure out something.
Thank you, Tom. I had a question about inclusionary zoning that I'll just ask now since we're on the topic with everybody a little bit. Did you guys research and find examples of this being successful? It's a relatively new concept for me personally. You know, I really learned a lot about it when I think Garrett at the last meeting kind of asked you guys to explain it. And so, I'm wondering if we're, you know, if it's a buzzword thing or if it's actually something that has been put into practice that we can look to? Is there anything we can look to?
We can provide you with some of the cities that do use it. It is used in some places. We looked at potentially adopting a program here several years ago now, 2012 maybe, or '11. And the economics didn't work at that time. And they may not work in the future. The economics have to work to make this program feasible for developers and also accomplish the ends that you want, which is affordable housing. So, we can give you, we can give you some references to look at. Again, it's a tool. It could be used. The economics will drive whether or not it becomes successful. Who knows in the next 10, 15, 20 years whether or not that'll be the case. So, I'd hate for us to get too hung up on it. It couldn't happen without an extensive process, probably changes in zoning, planning commission, city council review. So, it's not something that would just happen. There would be an extensive process and lots of discussion about the details of how a program like that might work.
Yeah, go ahead.
Unless you have another, I can?
Go ahead.
I have some thoughts on?
Yeah, go ahead. I might have?
I think, you know, I understand how, you know, staff's wording that is, it could be a tool. There's lots of tools that are, could be offered. There's also a lot of different facets to what inclusionary zoning can be. There's not a hard set? There's not a hard set prescriptive, you know, type or application. But I think Phyllis makes a good point is we gotta be really careful in our comp plan when we're stating goals and policies because somebody could easily interpret the writing of this being a policy that could use to promote it, to get it into an actual, you know, regulation or, or an ordinance. So I think we need to be careful about, you know, if people have concerns about this particular aspect, inclusionary zoning, I think we need to discuss it and we need to come up with, you know, some consensus and a recommendation. I don't know all the details of, you know, its application. It's been around since the seventies. Three big markets that have used inclusionary zoning have been Boston, the Washington DC area, and San Francisco. Boston and San Francisco have extremely high costs of living. Both those cities also implement forms of rent control and the, the, the results of inclusionary zoning have been very mixed. And a, and a lot of findings have been that it hasn't promoted anything affordable. What it does in a lot of applications is offsets the cost of the other units. People, you know, builders, landowners, property owners feel like they have to increase the cost of the other units to supplement the lower cost of the ones that they're mandated to do. There's a lot of different ways to achieve it. And so it's, it's not just one hard, fast way, but a lot of the findings are that it doesn't increase affordability.
Thank you. That, I mean, that's the concern that Jeff raised two weeks ago was that, that the net result is a, is a higher priced high end to offset it. And that, that's the thing that concerns me the most about it. And I don't, I don't want you to think, at least from my perspective, that we're harping on it by any means. There's just, there's a lot of stuff in here that I kind of put, like the land use chapter, I said, I put check marks next to because I thought it was all really good. And so when there's not that much to evaluate, you tend to focus on the things that you do have questions on or have concerns about. So I think you're gonna find that there's like three or four topics that all of us find interest in just because we're probably totally fine with the rest of the document. And at least that's how I feel. Yeah, but that's my bit concerned because we, this document has a lot of really good policy language about disadvantaged populations like seniors and low-income folks, the lowest-income folks and people with disabilities or, you know, homeless people, people who are completely homeless, students, populations that are not like the median. And there's, I do think there's a bit lacking on the, the median, the people who are maybe a, a family with a kid or two kids and they both have jobs, but the jobs, as we see in the statistics in the back, don't pay them enough to afford a home. And if we promote something like inclusionary zoning and the end result is that more expensive homes get more expensive and the really cheap homes get cheaper, that does absolutely nothing for the people in the middle. And so, and I, and that's a topic I'm gonna come back to is the people in the middle, maybe later, at least in my, in my comments. But that, that's for me, that's the big issue with that, that, that approach. And just one other thing on it, you know, there's a policy, and I'm not suggesting at this point that these policies aren't in here, but I agree that, you know, they need to be worded so that it's clear what we're trying to accomplish. But later on, on Policy H45, on page nine, it says, "Encourage and consider incentives for the dedication of a portion of housing to new projects to special needs housing." And I would suggest that that's a better approach to something like inclusionary housing. That, that's, and, and that, so that policy is suggesting that we give people a bonus for doing something like that, not force them to do something. And I just personally think that that's gonna be more successful. So I'd like to see maybe expansion of that policy to not just for projects with special needs housing, but maybe projects that incorporate affordable, affordable, affordable units. And that's similar to what we have with like the multifamily tax exemption, right? So maybe there's other ways, other incentives and credits that we can provide that would encourage people to do it. So.
H16 talks about our incentives for affordable.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agree with that. So though, I'm just saying, suggesting that those kinds of, when I read the document, I hit Policy H45 or a policy like Policy H16. And I think those are maybe as equally good, if not better, ways to try and address this affordability issue. Phyllis?
I just wanted to say that in, in those kinds of policies, what we're doing, looking at here is a shifting of the burden from one population to another. And I, I think sometimes we get merrily along thinking about only the positive side of the policy and we don't recognize where the burden is going. And I think we need to make sure we're paying attention to where that burden shifts. And if we're getting low income, affordable housing at the expense of off-the-charts upper and or middle income housing, we just need to be aware that if we choose to do that, we're very consciously making that choice as opposed to it's just an unintended consequence of the decisions we made aiming at one very narrow focus.
Garrett?
I'd like to have the commission discuss land capacity within these two chapters. I, you know, the land use chapter and the housing chapter, I was hoping after that there would be more of a correlation, at least discussed between land capacity and housing affordability and housing choices. And I feel like both these documents are lacking in that regard. And I haven't, I don't have specific language to propose at this time, but I'm hoping that we could have a discussion. And if the commission feels like that warrants staff writing some policy that would help just establish the fact that there is a connection between land capacity and housing affordability and choice. And we, you know, have heard from a lot of real estate professionals, landowners, that single-family housing is in short supply. We had this discussion, you know, we, we talked about this. I think both these documents lack in the demonstration of that connection and correlation. And I think as we look to future policy towards UGAs, future policy towards accessory dwelling units, future policy towards subdivision ordinance, the comp plan is sort of the guiding document. Tells us about those correlations and those goals. So I'd be interested to hear other commissioners' thoughts on, on that and if it felt like it warrants stronger wording in both of these chapters to that, to that effect.
Yeah, looking back over the last few months, we've been discussing, as I said earlier, we've had a lot of professional testimony here. Some of those folks are here tonight. Mr. Petrie's here, Ms. Twitchell, Mr. Jones had a lot of numbers and facts. But when I read this, I don't see any of that. I don't see any of that input from, from these experts that come in here, that bring us packets of information, letters to document where their numbers come from, and I see none of that. It's like they didn't even appear before this body and give testimony. That's what I see lacking in this document totally.
Tom?
Well, I want to ask Garrett about this land capacity question. I, I, I liked the, the idea that you, that you raised. And I think it was in Ms. Twitchell's letter stating the discrepancy between the, the estimate at Dewey Valley and, and what actually can be supported with all the wetlands and, and curricular areas taken out. Does the city now, or will it, use a, a different methodology to, to estimate land capacity, taking into effect all these environmental considerations?
First off, I guess we are gonna talk about land capacity. First off, it's not the city's land capacity analysis, it's the county's land capacity analysis, working with all the cities, using the same methodology countywide and in all the cities. Secondly, the Dewey Valley example that's been raised, the land capacity analysis had the correct numbers in it, have always had the correct numbers in there. The information that we gave to council initially when we were talking about that annexation included incorrect numbers and we, we corrected that. But the land capacity analysis has always had the correct numbers for that Dewey Valley area. Never counted as many units as what we told the city council were possible there initially. Okay? The, the, the methodology is consistent countywide and in all the cities, as I said. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. It's an estimate and it's a, it's a macro estimate. So the deductions that are taken out for all of the various factors, whether it's infrastructure or wetlands or whatever it might be, work on a macro scale. They don't necessarily work on every single parcel. But it's the best, it's the third or fourth time we've done this now. We've revised it every time. We've tried to make it more accurate every single time. And we're pretty confident that it is a good estimate and it shows that we have enough capacity to accommodate the population growth forecast and the employment growth forecast that the city council has recommended. So we can't change the methodology for Bellingham. It's the same in Bellingham as it's used everywhere else. And Chris is here if you want to talk about the specifics of the methodology and how the numbers were developed, but I hope we don't have to do that. The other example that's come up, remind me again, Clayton's example of the URMX zones and his suggestion that we've overcounted in those areas in the letter that you got. The, in fact, the county's methodology uses the base density in those areas. It doesn't use a mid-range number. We didn't want to use a mid-range number. We talked about perhaps it was, it was appropriate this time to use a mid-range number in those areas where you have a range of densities allowed. But we decided in the end to be conservative when we used the, the county used the base density number. So there are lots of notions about the land capacity analysis and how to change it and so forth. Again, we're pretty comfortable with the results. They are as good as they could be, given that we're trying to forecast what might happen in the next 20 years. You know, you can agree with the results or not. You can argue, you know, whether we should have added land or not, but at this point, we're working with the county to help make those final decisions. If there is some policy language that you want to add to the chapter or to the land use chapter that specifically addresses this issue, then let's, let's talk about what that might be and we'll help you with that. But we're not, we're not uncomfortable with the land capacity analysis. We're not uncomfortable with the results. They're not perfect, but they are consistent throughout the county and the, the errors that have been alleged are simply not true.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Greg. So I, I know Mr. Beehe is darn near perfect. I could walk down to his office and he could point me to all this land that has all this capacity and.
We can provide you with the spreadsheets and you can.
I, I can't read spreadsheets. I can look at a map and.
We have maps too.
Okay, thanks.
Can I say something real quick? I, I just want to, thanks, Tom. This is a hard topic for us, I think, to articulate and I just want to try and frame this a little bit, at least how I feel, and hopefully that encompasses what I think Garrett's asking for, which is that, that, that ship has sailed. The, the ship of what our population projection is gonna be, in my opinion, has sailed. And it's hard because we as a body did not agree with the recommendation that went forward from our council. And so when we approach, I think at an underlying level, when we look at this document, which is written based on what our city's recommendation was effectively, which was not our recommendation, we, there's, I think there's some underlying chafing with some of the things in here because, you know, at, at an underlying level, maybe we didn't agree with how things were moved forward, at least for me. So I, I don't think that our intent, when we talk about land's capacity, at least my intent, is not to suggest that the numbers change at this point. That's not our decision anymore. It's, and it is what it is. And I think that this plan has been drafted really well, looking forward for how our, our community could grow and change positively in the context of the growth projection we've decided on. But when you look at this, when you look at our land capacity that we've chosen through the lens of housing affordability, it, it warrants consideration, you know, it, it warrants that look. And that's, I think, what we need to be talking about as a body when we talk about land capacity is with what we've chosen to move forward with, what impact does that have on our ability to, to make housing affordable? And is this document set up to, to address that? And I agree with you, Steve, that there is, if there's one void in this, it's that. There is this, it's like we chose to choose, it's like we chose to go to grow inward and we just are pretending that this other element of the discussion just doesn't exist to a certain degree. And I do think that that's something that is lacking within here, this acknowledgement that at, at a baseline level, that the cost of land and the availability of land impacts our ability to provide affordable housing. That statement isn't even in this document anywhere and it's a baseline statement. So that's what I think, is that fair enough to say that that's what we should talk about? And I would like, I don't, I think it's a waste of our time, I guess, as a body to say, let's go back and talk about the growth numbers because the growth numbers are what they are. They're done. So let's talk about what the choice means for us as a community.
I agree.
Is that, Garrett?
I, I, I agree. I, I just feel like that acknowledgement that there's a relationship between land capacity and housing choice and affordability needs to be demonstrated in language in these two documents. That way, as we go through the next process, this comp plan stays. You know, the UGA conversation will come back, whether it's a year or two or three years from now, that'll come back. This document stays. So having that correlation well documented will help people in their decision-making process.
Like if a UGA comes up again?
Exactly.
Or rezoning things comes up again?
That, the land capacity.
We have, we have acknowledgement in the document that it matters. It has an impact.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Because it does. And, and I, I feel like we've gotten some mixed feedback from staff on that issue, you know, whether or not acknowledging that relationship. It's real and it needs to be documented. I, I wanted to, I have a question on, not to dive into the, Tom brought up a good point about methodologies of looking at growth numbers and land capacity. Does the city entertain like a third-party audit? I mean, if we hired this BERC to do their population projections, do we ever hire any subcontractors that are professionals in this field to look at our analysis and determine accuracy? Or is this something that we just do all in-house? I'm just curious as to how that works.
Well, it's something that, that city and county, the cities and county staff have been together.
Okay. And use agreed-upon methodology and, and that, but, but, but why, why sub out the growth projections as, to a, to a consultant and not land capacity analysis? I'm just curious. I mean, do you know?
Well, you're talking about the, the LCA is, is it established by the county or by a consultant?
City and county together, work on that.
But did they hire someone to like help them kind of develop, develop that? Did you guys just kind of come up with that?
No, we didn't hire anyone.
Yeah.
City and county staffs worked on it together.
And maybe that's a, maybe that's a policy language is to consider a third-party audit. If it's this contentious of an issue and nobody could seem to agree, you get these numbers that are vastly different, you know, and I'm not saying one's right and one's wrong. I'm just saying there's a pretty big disparity between what people feel is buildable based on the critical areas and all the other things that affect building. You know, you get a lot of different data here and again, I'm not taking sides, saying one side's right, one side's wrong. I'm just saying maybe, maybe a third-party audit would be warranted.
What would you see as the outcome of that? Whatever we find out?
Yeah, if, if, you know, one, if one side's numbers were supported, then it would help ensure accuracy and, and better policymaking.
Is that kind of like a third doctor's opinion?
Can we ask staff to, can I ask staff to take this idea of some acknowledgement in the document, I think both in the narrative portion and with potential policy language, to talk about the, the relation? to talk about the relationship between the two? I think you hit it on the head, Garrett, with talking about looking back, and like, let's say we come to a discussion eight years from now, and, you know, we're talking about these, our, our city boundaries and these things, and if we don't have this acknowledgement in this document that talks about that relationship, it, it's easy to kind of blow past it. And, and let's say, or let's say the LCA comes up, and people are questioning the conclusions, and we find eight years from now that we got way less out of our land than we, than we thought we would, right? Like, we, we didn't get the, the net, the net development on each lot. Then we want to be able to look at our comp plan and say, "Well, you know, we acknowledge that this could be a problem, and it's important that we get this right," whereas if there's an absence of discussion, it's easier to blow past. So, I, I don't know. I think that's about as far as I can take it today, but just as a concept. Phyllis?
Yeah, I think taking off on that and just having a list of assumptions, we're, when we're, you know, suggesting these policies and these goals, we're basing them on these assumptions, and we can define some of those assumptions, which I think is what you're saying, that we would be heading toward. I, I think that would be excellent.
Please add it to the list.
I had a specific question for Chris, since he's here, Beehe. On page 15, we have this table in the middle of the page that talks about the affordability of, the percentage of affordable homes in the last column, and we're really, really low right now, but we've been significant, between 2000 and 2005, it dropped like 40% and has, and has been down below 10% pretty much since then. Do you know why? Do you, do you have any, is there any metric for us to understand what happened between 2000, 2005 that, that did that? Was that everyone from California moving to Bellingham, lots of money? Was it, you know, the economic boom?
I, I don't have any hard data that says why that happened. It's, it's, it's based on sales data from the county assessor, you know, we looked at every...
Just pricing?
Yeah, they provide us with every single-family home sale in the county, and we geocode that by address, and then slice out Bellingham, and, and those are the numbers you have there. So, it, right, as far as why that happened, you know, I think the things you mentioned, I mean, certainly people moving into the area, there's, there's all kinds of things that would influence that. But, but no, I don't have a, I don't have a set of documented reasons as to why that's happening, but it is definitely a documented pattern. This table is an update of what's in the city's consolidated plan, and there's the, we just simplified it to four years, but the pattern does just continue in a fairly straight line, so, you know, from what you can see there.
Thanks. Go ahead. I'm just looking through the document.
Greg, Lisa, Tom brought up the infill housing toolkit when it was first introduced, was intended to be applied to single-family zones, not only multifamily zones. I didn't see any reference in the comp plan to a consideration of re-looking at the zoning that infills applied to. And if, if it's not in there, with regards to single-family neighborhoods, I thought that would be a topic of discussion, too. Not to say that that, you know, obviously, this isn't a regulatory document, but it's a guiding document for guiding conversation about where the infill toolkit may be appropriate, and I'd like to maybe have a, hear thoughts on considering the application of infill toolkit in single-family neighborhoods.
Well, policy, let's see, H3 is specific to the infill toolkit, and then H7 is specific to accessory dwelling units, so we're sort of breaking that out, and we're working on that right now.
It, it doesn't say anything specifically about the limitations of only being applied to multifamily zoning. So, not to say that this is a change in policy or a change, but saying, could, I think there should be some language saying, "Consider," because as this, you know, this has been around since 2009, we're starting to see the first implementation of it in multifamily zones, so maybe some of the inertia towards it, or the fear of the unknown, could be answered. You could start to see what some of the development looked like. Maybe time to, you know, as we're redoing our comp plan, to say at least, "Consider it," which was its original intent.
It's a good question. One of my concerns is that the infill toolkit's a bit of a catch-all right now, and it's got some housing forms that aren't really single-family. You know, there's like duplex, triplex, townhouses, some things that are a little bit farther from single-family. And I noticed, I was just looking, thinking, when you were looking at it, or when you were talking about the policies, policy H15 talks about implementing the countywide chat, and it says detached ADUs, smaller, and cottage housing in single-family zones, and that kind of gets a little bit at what you're talking about. Is, is there a way to, like, take the appropriate pieces? You know, as it is written now, I think the infill toolkit's a little too broad. I totally agree with, with the concept of how, broadening the housing choice type, housing type within those areas. I don't know if that gets far enough for you, but I just, you know, reading that policy kind of is speaking to what you're talking about a little bit.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good observation, because, yeah, fourplexes aren't, you know, probably appropriate in single-family zones, so the, the infill toolkit is pretty broad.
Yeah.
But cottage housing, detached ADUs, carriage housing, smaller lots, zero-lot lines, things of that nature probably are appropriate, so I wonder if this policy, yeah, maybe that policy does enough.
Maybe not, and, you know, something to think about.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah, I just want to make a, a comment about affordability. I painted a really broad picture a while ago, and I think we as a society also have to look at the rising expectations of everybody. After World War II, Bill Levitt and lots of other people built homes for returning GIs and others that were in the, in the ballpark of 900 or 1,000 square feet, two-bedroom, one-bath, and they were affordable. Now, people are looking at 2,000 square feet, three-bedroom, two-baths, preferably en suite, a nook, a fancy kitchen with stainless appliances, and yada, 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 and they want that to be their affordable housing. And, you know, this is just a comment, but in my mind, affordable housing is, is something that you can buy, that gets you on that ladder, on the rung, to start climbing up to the 2,000, or 3,000, or 5,000-square-foot house of, of your dreams. And, you know, I, I, there's no place in this document to put that kind of thing. This is just a comment throwing out to the vast television audience, that maybe considering affordable meaning more modest.
Going back to the infill housing, I'm wondering, though, with regards to HU15, if, the infill housing is already in active ordinance, so with, like, policy H15, I wonder if it does enough to, you know, enable, because we already have a document that's in ordinance, that's a, you know, has regulatory control. I could make a specific recommendation for policy H15 to include townhomes and, with cottage housing, and detached ADUs, and small lots, and townhomes. You know, I think would be going a little further in that direction. As far as policy document towards infill housing, maybe certain forms of the infill housing toolkit or a revision of the toolkit to be applicable in single-family zones, which would probably require an ordinance rewrite anyway, but I think townhomes would be appropriate to consider in single-family neighborhoods as well.
We can, we can craft some policy language for you to consider. I'm not sure that H15 is the right spot, but, yeah.
Phyllis?
Well, I'm just looking at policy H15, and it, one of the bullet points is to reduce parking requirements, and from some of the other comments that we've had with people here, that is a major concern as we do infill and increased density is, is reducing parking. People don't get rid of their cars. I just would be careful about that one.
While we're on the topic of infill and ADUs and stuff like that, I would just like to just make a comment, and I think this might generate a proposed language change, but I think that the comments that Ann Mackey made regarding owner occupancy and accessory dwelling units are really important. When we had our first ADU discussion, I felt like there was some kind of untouchable, at least from my perspective, elements to the ADU ordinance, and one being making sure that adequate parking is provided for those new units, and the other, the two main ones were that and that owner occupancy requirement. And Ann made, Ann made a really good point that I hadn't thought about in terms of, I thought about it, but not the way she explained it, in terms of keeping it owner-occupied creates affordability. In the context of affordability, keeping it owner-occupied is a better thing for the homeowner than creating something that becomes two rentals. And, and I think that's a really good point, and I wonder if it warrants adding specific language to policy H7 that talks about ADUs in single-family, multifamily zones, and detached ADUs in certain neighborhoods, that makes it clear that that owner occupancy is, is an important element? And that's just my perspective. Something maybe that you guys could think about how to incorporate. Maybe it's just a change in the box that she commented on the right, where it kind of, it, in Bellingham, current rules require preppers to live in one of the units, kind of implies that that's how it's now, but that might not be how it is in the future, and I think that that language is maybe leading us away from, at least where I personally think we should go on that issue. So, I'm not suggesting that that's something we vote on or any, you know, by any means, but something for staff to maybe consider incorporating.
I'm, I have a comment on the ADUs, too. I think, I absolutely agree. Single, single-family neighborhoods with ADUs should maintain an owner-occupied provision. I think that's key to keeping ownership in neighborhoods, and, but there is a distinction right now in our ADU code between multifamily and single-family. So, currently detached ADU units are permitted in multifamily zones, not in single-family zones. A requirement for owner-occupied ADUs in multifamily makes no sense at all. So, I think it's important in the document to have some discussion about the difference of multifamily zoning and single-family zoning with regards to the owner-occupied requirement, because the, the idea behind multifamily zoning is the highest and best use of the property, which doesn't mean it has to be owner-occupied. It's a multifamily zoning. So, as we move forward with this process of ADUs, we have to make sure that that's a clear distinction.
You made that point when we talked about the ADUs, and it's a really good point. It's, yeah, it's like a, effectively a down zone of sorts if you do it in a multifamily zone. Whether or not that's appropriate for the comp plan or for in the actual ordinances we're reviewing, like in the ADU ordinance, I don't know, but maybe it's appropriate to make that distinction here, but it's a good point. Yeah. Does that make sense? Garrett brought it up before, man. Anybody else?
Well, I, I have a question, just right below it on policy H18, talking about surplus public lands. Where is this surplus public land, and can I buy it?
Well, we're going to identify where it is, and then we'll, we'll let you know whether or not it's available for your purchase or not. This, 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 I think, is a nice addition. It's something the city could take a proactive stance on, like we've done with the Aloha Motel site, and there may be more of those opportunities in the future, so we wanted to have some policy support in the plan for that.
Steve?
Yeah, I've got a question on, on a tie-in here. Is there a tie-in presently between housing, or let's say, a multifamily building, four or five stories, and requiring the ground floor to be retail? Does that fall under this context? Because it's definitely affects affordability.
Chris can talk about where that's required now. So, yeah, you want to go ahead and do that, Chris?
I, I drove around a couple days ago, up on Lincoln Street where the drive-in used to be.
Yeah.
There's still vacancies in the bottom floor of that building. I went out to Dupont, where we just approved a new building out there in Dupont. There's four lease signs in all the bottom first floor. Down on State Street, there's, there's, by the, the bus depot, same situation. There's empty, empty cubes in that building, and that's got to affect affordability. If you're going to build some kind of a multifamily that required maybe some offices and, and some, some housing units, you can't say nothing's going to happen on the first floor, because there's just not enough retail to be supported in these walk-around, these walkabout neighborhoods. I, I just didn't know if there's a tie-in here.
Yeah, right now, the Lincoln Street example you cited there, that is a planned commercial zone. It's not in an urban village, and our planned commercial zones allow residential on the condition you provide a component of commercial. And so, that was a requirement of that zone there. That was not an urban village. That's the planned commercial zoning, and it has not worked out well in all situations, and so, you know, it, it would be good to take a new look at that. Otherwise, our urban villages in Fairhaven, the downtown Fountain District, and Sandwich Way, each has a commercial core area that requires commercial. Outside of that, we have commercial transition areas where commercial is optional. We have purposely focused the commercial cores to focus the commercial use and create a, a critical mass of activity, to encourage a critical mass of activity. In the downtown, we actually shrunk it from what it was previously. We were finding that we were requiring too much commercial, and we weren't allowing the market to decide where it was appropriate, and so we shrunk it to those streets where commercial truly was working and where we truly want that pedestrian experience to be very strong. So, I think that we have done well with our urban villages. The State Street example that you mentioned down by the WTA, those spaces did fill up. Dupont, I believe they have one or two, at least one of those spaces is filled. I'm not sure about the rest.
No.
And so, but, again, the urban villages, I, I think that we have done well to keep it focused. We could take a look at it in our planned commercial zoning, though.
Isn't there a vehicle to revisit this problem, to try to do something with these spaces for the economic viability of the person who developed it, perhaps?
In some cases, it's, it's challenging, because the zoning prohibits another use. It, it requires, explicitly requires a commercial component, and so, again, it would be a matter of taking a new look at the zoning standards, what the permitted uses are, what the required uses are, and, you know, recommending some more appropriate approaches to how to deal with that.
Would that fall under the auspices of this document?
Well, yeah. Well, yeah, the tie-in, Steve, could be a policy statement here that says we should review our commercial zoning regulations in areas where ground floor retail is required to see if it's still appropriate.
I, I would love to see something like that added.
I think it's a great comment. I wrote down monitor zoning requirements for ground floor commercial uses in multifamily buildings and their impact on housing affordability. That's like a draft policy statement regarding that. Because you're right, and I know from experience, working with people who build mixed-use buildings, that they have to discount the value, the revenue from the commercial spaces when they go get financing, because the bank isn't going to give them full value on that because it's unlikely that it's going to be leased. So you build it and it's an expense in your cost pro forma, and then you don't get any revenue out of it. And that does have a direct impact on affordability because you're not going to lose money every month on your loan. You're going to charge more in your residential units potentially to make up the gap. And it does take a long time. The Chestnut Flats building, which has all four commercial spaces full now, was built eight, I think, eight years ago, seven years ago. And this is the first year, 2015, that all the tenant spaces were full. It took seven years for that property owner to fill his commercial space. And I'm, you know, I'm sure that impacted the decisions he made about the, the rents that he was charging to make up the gap. So I think it's a great comment, Steve. And, and the vehicle is a policy that encourages the city to monitor the impacts.
You know, I think about a year, a year and a half ago, this body made a decision on a, a commercial project that was going to, I think residential with some commercial component that was going to go in on Ashley and Byron.
Uh, yeah. I wasn't involved in that though, because I wasn't involved in that. So.
Well, but we, I think, I think the decision, at least that I thought we made, was not to require that they put in that commercial component. And I, I think that was a smart move. And I'd like to see that happen elsewhere as well.
That's an example. I think the, the city's done that in several instances with rezones. And that's an example of the city changing zoning code because they've looked at, like what Chris, you know, Cook said, they looked at the impacts and it didn't make sense anymore. And so, yeah, that's why a policy that encourages the city to look at that is a great idea.
And that kind of segues into policy H-41, periodically review and update regulations and design standards. I think, I would like to have it stated somewhere in there that, that changes would be relatively easy to make. I mean, I, I don't think that we need to go to the hearing examiner or, you know, the governor to make changes in a, in a design standard or, or a zoning reg. But, you know, if, if something is not working, it's really not smart to keep doing it that way. You gotta make a change and try something else and find something that does work.
Well, just with design standards, the process of amending or revising them, can that be done administratively? What is the city's mechanism or tools available to do that? This says periodically, periodically review and update zoning regs and design standards. What's that process look like right now?
So anytime that you're going to amend development regulations or design standards, that takes a type six process. Basically requires a public hearing with planning commission. Planning commission makes, makes recommendation to city council. That's followed with a public hearing with city council, just like.
The same, the design standards are the same. So.
You went through that process just a couple of years ago with the design standards.
I've got a, a thought I'd like to float out there that I may or may not be able to explain clearly. But we're going to talk about the economic chapter, and we talked about it a couple of years ago. And, you know, a big discussion about that was that we can't, there's only so much a government agency can do to, to raise wages and, you know, directly influence kind of the stagnant wage issue that we have that Tom brought up. But I see, there's two ways to make housing more affordable. One is to bring the price of housing down, and the other is to bring the income that people are making in our community up. They're, you know, coming from both sides and try and create more wealth for people in their jobs, better paying jobs, so that they can afford the higher priced house. So we can bring it from both sides. And so I'm sure that that's going to come up when we talk about the economic development chapter. But one way that that ties back to the housing chapter is that I think we should be monitoring or keeping an eye on what types of housing people who have those higher paying jobs want. And maybe I'm not explaining, I probably can't explain this very clearly, but if you, if you, you know, if you're working in the tech industry, if you're working in a certain industry and you're going places for a job, you're, I think that demographic of people probably wants a certain type of housing. And I don't know if we're monitoring that specifically, but it seems like it would make sense to keep an eye on what higher paying job, what the people who have higher paying jobs want to live in. Because if we don't provide any of that kind of housing, then they won't come here. And that will directly negatively impact our ability to bring wages up. That's kind of a, does that make any sense at all?
They, they all want to live on houseboats in Lake Union.
Well, they probably do, but we can't do that. And I'm not saying that they all want single-family homes. We might find that they all want little two-bedroom, one-bath cottages, or everybody wants to live in an apartment. There's some assumptions in this document that, that the trend is shifting. And, and it is. And there's data that's been presented, but there's also data being presented from members of the public that says that it's not shifting, that 76% of people want a single-family home. They might not want a 3,000 square foot home on a 10,000 square foot lot, but maybe they want a 1,200 square foot home on a 3,000 square foot lot or a 2,000 square foot lot. So is there, is there a mechanism that we can keep track of that kind of thing? Is there data available? Maybe this is kind of a question for Chris. Is there data out there that would allow the city to like annually or every couple of years, kind of look at what's going on regionally in the job market and what those people are demanding?
There isn't anything that does exactly that. There are products, like there's a, there's a U.S. Tapestry Market Segment product that we subscribe to that describes by zip code the prevailing demographic and, and groups people into kind of buzzword categories and says, you know, this group in zip code 98226 prefers XYZ. It's very general, you know, for, to be relevant for us, you're talking about two or three zip codes and Bellingham being, of course, the, the major metro concentration in those zip codes. You could make some assumptions, but it's pretty general. We could certainly look at OFM housing production data for, you know, pretty much any city or county in the state and see what the mix is that each community is building. And we've done some of that to see how we are positioned relative to like other Western Washington cities of, you know, we looked at everything that was, you know, Bellingham's around 85,000. We looked at everything that was 50,000 above us and 50,000 people below us, that band of population for all the cities, and kind of looked at how we compared for single-family versus multifamily and then what our comp plans forecast. As far as going into more detail, looking at, you know, how many single-family attached duplex, triplex, that kind of thing, there is data for that. The census, the American Community Survey has that. We haven't, we haven't done broad-based regional kinds of work with those data sets, but we, the data's there. So I mean, it's something that we could potentially track or collate periodically and see how we stack up.
Sounds like it's available. I'm going to propose that we talk about a policy, maybe an additional policy that speaks to that. Monitor housing demand relative to housing type and income demographic or something along those lines that identifies that we're maybe on a certain basis, you know, certain timeframe, looking at those statistics to see if we're kind of trending in the wrong direction from what people actually want.
Is that kind of what they're talking about in policy H-22?
Maybe it's there already.
Page six.
That's pretty broad. I think that's more broad than what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know. I mean, monitor the city's affordable housing market. What does that mean?
How are you going to do that?
What are we talking about with that? Are we talking about affordable housing, like defined affordable housing? Like we have in our multifamily tax exemptions, things like that? Are we talking about the, the market rate of housing and how affordable that is relative to norm, you know, normal wages? When you guys talk about that in this document, what, what, I guess that's a good question. What term, what are you talking about when you, when you, when we use these term affordable housing? Are we talking about the general affordability of housing? Or are we talking about quote unquote affordable housing?
I, I think in general, when we, when we talk about affordable within the context of this chapter, it matches what we would show in our consolidated plan. So it's the definition of if you make the, a, a family that makes or a household that, that has, makes 80% of median family for that given area, that they would be able to spend 30% of their income on, you know, mortgage interest or, you know, mortgage insurance and taxes. They would be able to fold that into 30% or less. I think that's the general yardstick we're using.
Right. Tom, maybe that answers it.
Sorry.
I'll think about that.
For the second part of it though, I mean, we're talking about our affordable housing policies, which is our comp plan.
Yeah. So we're evaluating.
Consolidated plan, everything else. And that's the broader picture.
Yeah.
So I mean, we monitor through our consolidated plan and we update that every five years. So that's fresh data that we're getting. But that's for a specific part of.
Yeah. I think I'm speaking more to looking at where, you know, what, what the, what's the demand is from certain demographics for housing. And I don't know if that data exists. It's just an idea, you know? It sounds like there's some, but we have to make some inferences from what's out there. And so I, I'll think about that and try and come up with something more concrete for you guys to consider.
We, we could also check. I know that, you know, last year, you've seen bits and pieces of it in this chapter, and it's been presented by other, by the public in a few cases, the 2015 Housing Needs Assessment that the state did.
That's it.
We could check with them and see if that's something that's, if there's any plan to update that, if that's going to be on a recurring basis, or if that was more just a point in time kind of thing. That might be, because that does take a good regional look and has reports that are by city and county.
That sounds, that sounds like closer to what I'm talking about.
Important to have housing policies that support all demographics. You know, there's a lot of talk about low and moderate income, which is extremely important, but, you know, higher income earners too, you know? So the broad range of, you know, demographics is important because they buy houses, they need, you know, certain forms of housing too. So.
Yes. And I mean, this chapter is broader than the consolidate plan. It's looking at affordable housing for all economic segments, just as you stated. And we do mention workforce housing several times, as is the economic development chapter.
One more. On policy H-20, provide information to residents on affordable housing opportunities and first-time homeownership programs. In the land use chapter, a couple of weeks ago, there was a policy that I felt strongly about that talked about in providing better communication to underserved populations. And I think it would be worthwhile to make that specific reference in this policy as well. Because it's, it's, I mean, this policy's great because it talks about making, you know, making it more, information more accessible. But I think it's important for us to acknowledge that we really need to make that information accessible to underserved populations who are the ones who have the biggest affordability issue in the community. So maybe something on that.
Wait.
Phyllis?
Maybe the word affordable or the words affordable housing seems to skew things toward the low end. What about just making a statement that, that we would be providing housing for all economic ranges?
We do. I mean, that's a GMA goal, and that's a goal of the chapter. And I, and I mean, Chris is right that we, as far as the monitoring, it is that very low and low-income group in the consolidated plan. But we can broaden that and we probably, we should broaden it to, to incorporate.
Otherwise, we're ignoring it.
Affordable to all economic segments, because that's the goal of the chapter. That's the goal of the plan.
Yeah, I understand that. But we seem to be focusing on that one end of things almost to the.
Well, we do focus on it because the data shows us that there's such a need for that particular pocket of our community. And the lowest income groups are the groups that are, are affected the most by unstable housing conditions. So I think, Chris can talk about that a little more as far as the data.
But it might be we're not even looking at the other.
Yeah, I think that was kind of to Ali's point is there's, there's two ways to increase affordability. One is to, you know, keep the house, cost of housing low or to raise incomes. And now obviously, policy statement can't just magically raise incomes, but some acknowledgement that, you know, better paying jobs, that's the other side of the equation. Better paying jobs and, and making sure that our housing needs can accommodate, our housing choices can be, can accommodate higher earners as well, or job creators.
Yes. And we can fold a specific policy into the chapter on that. It is mentioned in the economic development chapter several times, the concept of living wage jobs. And we do talk about matching incomes with affordable housing or housing that's affordable to folks that work in the community. There was a policy in the existing housing chapter that said something broad, like raise incomes for everyone in the community so that everyone can afford a house. And I mean, how, how can the city, I mean, it just, it's too vague. We need something more specific. And I think the economic development chapter, which is newer, does a good job. So we can certainly reference these policies or fold one into this chapter.
That might make sense.
If you want to look at that and let us know.
The, the idea of having, having a tie-in policy?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think there's lots of great policy on, Lisa, you make a really good point on all these issues. And that suggestion I made was about having a mechanism to, to monitor that so that, so we make sure we're going the right direction as we move forward.
Tom, did you?
Well, I have another silly question. On policy H-46, it says, support implementation of the Watkins County Plan to End Homelessness. What is that plan to end homelessness? Are we just outlawing them?
What was the question?
Are we outlawing the homeless?
Are we what?
Is that the plan?
Out.
Lying.
Lying? No.
Yes. Are we, are we going to put them in a paddy wagon and ship them to Skagit?
No. No, we're, no. You can certainly go online and look that plan up. It's located also, I believe, on the city's website. As the city is a partner with that group to develop that plan. And, and that's one of the, I know the mayor's key objection, part of her.
So are there specifics in the plan?
Platform over the next year on that? I'm sorry.
Are there specifics? Are there specifics in that plan? There are. Okay.
There are specifics.
I'll take a look at it.
H-49, it generally gets at what I think the city, city's role in, in this is.
Okay. And, you know, again, I'm going to make a general comment. In general, the, the plan or the chapters is pretty well-written. But policy H-51, support wage for, ways for older residents, yada, yada, yada. I would say that if, if I were writing this, I would, I would write it as encourage universal design and home retrofits for lifetime use. And that would be it. All, everything that comes previous to that.
Why is that?
Because I, because I like brevity.
Well, and not only that, support ways for older adults and people with, with disabilities to remain in their homes. They have absolutely nothing to do with design or home affordability. Could be something completely different, unrelated to housing.
This particular section is special housing needs and homelessness. And special housing needs is a GMA requirement. And older population, elderly is part of that group. And so we're also trying to get at the fact that our, our population is aging rapidly and we need to, to accommodate those folks. And if they want to live in the home that they're living in now, if they want to live in the neighborhood that they're in now, we need to find ways to make that happen.
Steve?
Yeah, I had an example, something that happened for this policy H-51. I had two in-laws that were living upstairs, two bedrooms, full kitchen, living room. And downstairs was a full bath, a bedroom. And we wanted to put in some kind of a small kitchen unit to have. kitchen unit to have somebody there 24 hours, because they needed assisted living help. And when we went to the city, it was just, we had to put in a full-blown kitchen, we had to modify almost half of the garage to make it happen, and it just didn't, to us, make sense that there should have been an exam, an, an exception here, to put in a smaller unit, so they could have a, maybe a two-burner stove and a sink with minimum requirements. So, we eventually had, they had to move out, and we had to put them in nursing, because we couldn't get a 24-hour caregiver at their site, which is disappointing, because the intent wasn't to build another full mother-in-law suite, it was just to get something, get by, and get somebody there 24 hours. The requirements that are permanently there were absolutely prohibitive, and we were forced to put them in nursing home. So, I would support what Tom said. I, I think there's, there, there are examples of maybe a variance for some kind of a design, and so you keep them in place would really have, it would have been a great deal to them, but we couldn't do it.
I don't know if we have any more comments at this time. I, that was a lot probably to take in, so appreciate you, let's do it. I think, echoing Tom again, from, from last meeting, I really think that the format is great, and the, the size is great, and it conveys the message. And, and like I said earlier, I really think that on, you know, on the majority of the message, there's, there's great framework in here, particularly on targeting the, Lisa, like you said, the most in-need segment of the population, which is really important. And I think we have a lot of great policy on that. So I guess we'll come back and talk about it, them together, in a couple of weeks. And Garrett, we're not going to, again, make any recommendations at that point, but that'll be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I envision that's just our opportunity to kind of get both of them out, continue the same discussion we had today, and two weeks ago, and just kind of meld the two together a little bit, and get to a point where we feel comfortable moving on to the next topic.
Yes.
So, it may take a whole meeting, but is there any value in being prepared to talk about the next subject? Or would we just kind of, like, let's say we got through our discussion, and we all felt comfortable in an hour, would we just wrap it up and, and come back at, at the next meeting?
We'll check and see if, if the next chapter up is transportation. I'm not sure that that one will be ready in time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad, if, if that were to happen, I would be comfortable with a short meeting. Not suggesting we have a really long meeting, but, you know, I know you guys want to move through this, so I just want to make sure that we're working with you on the schedule.
Yeah, we'll check and see.
Okay. It may take the full meeting to get, to get through these topics next time, I don't know. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, everybody on the commission. I think that was another good discussion. We keep it going. Thank you to all the public commenters, and I think with that, we'll end the work session. So thank you, everyone who came. We've got some other items to address, so if you are going to leave, just please leave quietly. Yeah. Okay, so we have some new business, I guess. It's old, because we should have done it two weeks ago, but it's new tonight, and that's the appointment of our Shoreline Committee. We forgot to do that when we appointed our commission members, so I guess we should just treat that, like, Greg, do you want to talk about, explain what they do very briefly, maybe? Like...
Yeah, well, Steve can talk about it, probably, as well as I can. They review the shoreline permits that come to the city when they're, when it's called for, for a recommendation. The Shoreline Committee provides a recommendation to the director. The director makes the final decision on these things, but they do provide a recommendation. I don't know how many times you've met over the last year or so, it's...
I think, in the last two years, we've met, I, I believe it's seven times.
Yeah.
And it's normally for an hour. I think we've only met one time when we didn't have a planning commission meeting directly following, so it certainly doesn't take, just that one time was an exception.
We, yeah, we try and schedule them on the same night as your regular meetings, so you're not, we're not dragging you out on a special night.
Mr. Sundine is, he produces a packet, very basically the same as we get for the planning commission items. Very professional, as usual, and it's, they're very interesting. We just had, he talked about the Granary Building for the first time. Saw the, saw the elevations for that. Pretty exciting, and...
That is exciting.
Of course, we recommend it to the director to proceed with the, the special permit.
Who, who are the current members?
Phyllis, Tom, and myself.
Well, there's only five of us here, so, yeah, so...
Yeah.
So Jeff, Jeff can do that, too.
Newbie.
Well, we, we haven't discussed this at all, but, you know, I would feel comfortable nominating the slate of existing Shoreline Committee members.
Yeah, I know everybody's real busy on, I, I feel like my plate's pretty full.
Yeah?
Yeah. I feel like my plate's pretty full.
You know, I, I, I was on the Shoreline Committee for just, like, I think, the first year, but I, in my business, I deal with a lot of shoreline permitting, and I felt a little uncomfortable having, like, conflicts all the time, potentially. Now, I haven't, you know, I haven't been in that position since, but that, that was one reason why I kind of didn't want to do it, just because it's, you know, when you, especially with a smaller body, if you have to accuse yourself, it makes it more difficult to make a decision. But, you know, I mean, if, if there's members who are not interested, like, you know, I would do it. Or we could wait, if, if we want to wait, we could wait. Would that be a problem, to wait until we had a full, full commission to discuss this?
No, as long as you do it at your next meeting. We do have some things coming up, probably, in March, that we'll need a Shoreline Committee meeting for. But no, you want to wait till there's a full complement at your next meeting, you could do so.
I mean, unless, unless, you know, the full, I mean, you guys were on the committee last year, I mean, if you were comfortable going again, then we could probably...
I don't know if I can do it three years, but...
I think, is there a limit on how long you can serve?
Lifetime appointment.
Yeah, you're on for life.
Well, I would do it if nobody else wants it, but I would step down if somebody else just needed or wanted to do that, so just fill me in, as in case you need somebody.
Tom?
I got one more here.
He's in.
I'm coming down the days.
You want to close at the top, don't you?
He's all in.
Well, I mean, in, in that case, it would, would the slate be interested in serving again? Would that be okay? Yeah? Phyllis, is that okay? I don't, I mean, I don't want to put you in a position you don't want to be in. Nobody wants to do things they don't want to do, yeah?
No, I mean, it's fine, but if somebody else is just dying to be on the committee...
Yeah, I don't think Garrett or I are.
Why not?
I have a feeling Jeff probably is, you know, he's busy, it, it's hard for him, I think, so...
I think we got it.
Is that, is that an item that has to be voted on? No? Okay, there you go.
Just a point.
Thank you, all three of you. I know it's an extra meeting every once in a while, and I know that that's extra work, extra packet, so I do appreciate that.
We, we're reimbursed all those expenses.
What? Oops.
I appreciate them when they're, when they're back-to-back with this meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Next meeting's on the 18th. Greg, anything, anything else?
I just wanted to let you know that, subject to council approval on Monday, you will have a, a new member joining the group at your next meeting.
Great.
Thank you, I wasn't sure if, if I should make that announcement or not, so I'm glad you did it.
Yeah, the mayor's recommendation to appoint Lisa Anderson is in the council packet, so it's public knowledge, and, and it is subject to council confirmation, but assuming that happens on Monday, then she'll be joining you, and she's here.
Lisa's right there, yeah.
Lisa's right there.
So, welcome.
She'll be joining you for your next meeting.
Yeah, thanks for volunteering.
Fantastic.
That's exciting. We're going to have seven people, which is great.
That's great.
All right, well, thanks. We'll, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.